Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is approval of minutes June twenty-six, two thousand and fifteen. I think that was a very short meeting, it was the contract, the custodian contract, I think it was the last one of the year. I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second? Any discussion?
Yes. Under the questions section at the bottom, it says, Dr. Lee said we will monitor school enrollment on a school committee. I don't know what that means. No, so I think that we need to review, is there some kind of a recording Jennifer, for this meeting?
No, there was no recording that we didn't have anybody.
I think my intention was just to basically to say that we need to monitor school enrollment by the school committee.
Sounds good.
A school committee needs to monitor school enrollment.
Okay, and then if we could just change underneath where it says motion to go into executive session and state the purpose so that it's, we're all legal. Okay, and it was for contract, purpose of contract strategy related to.
Number three, the special strategy with respect to collective bargaining over the nation. I ask for a motion to amend the minutes, amend the minutes.
I'll move to amend the minutes.
Second?
Second.
On for the amendment?
Aye.
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 And then the original motion for approval of the minutes of June twenty-six has amended. Are you ready for a vote now, so?
Aye.
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 Next up is the co-asset high school football captain. I just want to say what a terrific year, I went to, I think, almost all the games except for the ones I was on call, and every one of them was just terrific, they were just really well played. Great fun, great entertainment, hard work by the team. I just enjoyed it.
Well, tonight we asked if the captains could come along with their, with their coach, their coach could not be present but Mr. and we have two captains who will be glad to introduce themselves. Gentlemen, step up because we want you to show off what you brought with you, they've brought trinkets. Come on up and tell us a little bit about the season.
You got the wrong.
Yeah, Rocco, you just have your shirt on.
We want to, Chris Hagerty, our senior captain quarterback, and Rocco Gial, senior for the football team this year, both of them had played tremendous holes in the team this year. And Coach A would love to be here, but he actually has to be home because his wife is coaching drama tonight, so they're, they're passing off a little bit here. But we just wanted to thank the school committee for inviting us here tonight and then inviting the boys here to share a little bit of all what they wanted, a little bit of the story of the year. But the support from the community was great this year, I think they can talk a little bit about that too.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for having us here, it was actually an unbelievably year. It was everything we wanted from it, one win away really, but to play Gillette was unbelievable, like the experience is something like, at the field, like it's crazy because you see it every Sunday. And you're like, I played there, but I mean, I feel like a lot of it was the twelfth player, like the twelfth member of the team, which was like the fans and the whole town support, it was great, everyone was into it. I mean, it was, I'd like to thank you personally, like for the great year, I guess, from a fan's point of view.
Yeah, everywhere I went around town, like people are always talking about it and there's just a lot of support around town, so it made the experience that much better, kind of making us feel like celebrities a little bit, which was fun. But um, so yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for that and thank the whole town.
So, could you tell us what the trophies are?
Um, so, this one was the South, when we won the South, this was the one that, this is the one we beat Millis, fourteen to eight, that was a fun game.
Yeah. That. Right here.
We, yeah, yeah, we won on, won in the fourth quarter, we were down fourteen to eight, or beaten up eight to six, and then we scored a touchdown.
One. Eight six.
That was a lot of fun because it was here, so we had so many fans here and then you could come off the field and celebrate with all of, all the co-asset people. And then, um, this one, league champions, that wasn't a very close game, it was forty-two nothing.
Oh yeah, this was. Yeah. This was after senior night against Mashby at home, it was, um, what was it, they had, their play, their star running back hurt his knee after we scored on the first possession on a kickoff, so it wasn't much of a game from there, I guess, but yeah, it was a good, I mean, we had to beat Mashby, then we had to beat Carver, Monemoi, and Hull. So, beat Hull twice, which is good.
Yeah.
And what's the last one?
And then, uh, the one that got away, I guess. Um.
Did you actually expect to ever bring that home?
What'd you say, the beast?
Would you ever have expected to bring that home this year?
The fi- the finalists, oh, yeah, I mean, I think we always, it was always a dream, but, I mean.
This?
We had our hearts set out for it, we had one, really, the one that said state champion.
But I guess it was a great experience and just being there and watching the.
Looking back, like the fact that it even says state finalists is great, like it's unbelievable to be the first co-asset team to do it, really.
Yeah. Yeah, and we've kind of set the tone for years to come, hopefully, the teams can get the big one now, it says state champions, so, and it was a, a lot of great memories from it, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
It was good.
Well, aside from the great memories, what I learned is how to dress many, many, many layers in that cold, because that whole game, I don't think in all my life I've ever been outside of such a cold game as the Thanksgiving game this year.
Yeah, that was cold.
That was cold, absolutely, so, well, I'm wondering if you have any sage words of wisdom for the students coming up for next year?
Um, just no regrets, uh, you know, there's, when you lose in the championship, there's always regrets, but I think we, we played as hard as we could, so I don't have too many regrets, but I think they just.
Yeah, I mean, um.
Have to, have to set a goal, is what we did.
Yeah, like from a football stance, uh, standpoint, like you just wanna, if you haven't played before, go out, like listen to your coaches, they're very good, like try your best, and if you have, try to be a leader for all the kids who are, maybe don't know as much football as you. And from a grades, like from school, like you have to do well freshman year, like if you're trying to play college sports, which is something I'm trying to do, you're gonna regret if you don't do as well as you could in freshman year, which is something I definitely regret.
Right. Yeah.
So, unfortunately, like you definitely wanna, don't wanna slack off ever, it's definitely never gonna pay off.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, it's a good lesson.
Yeah.
I think one of the reasons I was happy to bring both these young men here today is Rocco, um, was instrumental, I think, this year in getting a lot of the elementary school kids to the games. He works his community service project with my son's fourth grade class, Mrs. Hanson's class, Team Hanson, who are huge fans of Rocco. But one of the things we did to promote the game was we sent our seniors with Coach Sylvia, the day that we went to Gillette with the captains, our seniors went down to Osgood and Deer Hill and spent lunch and recess with the kids, following the football around, promoting the game. And then you saw the huge crowd of younger kids and so many parents that called me after and emailed me and thanked us for, for these guys coming down, it was such a great experience for them, and I think got the whole community involved. So Rocco is pretty much our elementary school liaison this year, he's been, and the kids love him, he's a rock star down there and rightfully so. And then Chris, I got a call the day after the game, the Monday after the game from the MIA, and one of the directors of the MIA nominated Chris for sportsmanship award. For the sportsmanship he displayed after the game, he's the only, only person that were nominated from the Gillette experience, so he's going to a pool that could possibly win the MIA sportsmanship award for football, so.
Wow.
Just the way he conducted himself after that game and the interviews and obviously knowing that he was upset, but congratulating the other team and just the way he conducted himself, everybody there noticed it, so.
Excellent, well, I also have to say that, I sat near Mrs. Hanson, so I know that you had a good effect on her, positive effect on her, she was all bundled up and down there in the front watching you.
Oh yeah.
So that's for sure, well, one of the things gentlemen, I'm hoping you'll do is allow the school committee come out in front and take a picture with you.
Sure.
Okay. You stay right there, they'll kind of, certainly make sure he has trophies, always good to have trophies, step right around. That's a good problem.
Yes, I did, thank you, I really.
I'll freak that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job, good job.
I think your sister planned with you, congratulations, I've seen you since like sixth grade. We're on a little.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Congratulations.
So the, that was great, we'll be back here next year doing the same thing. So, the next thing on, on my list today or on my report is to talk about the French exchange, and I believe you all received a packet from Mr. Potter, who is here to address the French exchange, and maybe you can come on up here.
Absolutely.
You might want to twist that chair around and have a seat so you can have a chat with us.
All right.
About what's happening, what you're planning to do, and how we can all enjoy you.
Bonsoir. I'm Jeff Carter, I teach French at the high school. And Beth Murat, the other French teacher, and I are planning on conducting the fifth installment of our French exchange, happens every two years, we're planning on conducting that next year. So it's, it's not an entire year-long process, but the, the French part of the exchange, they would visit us in October for two weeks, and we plan on going there in, in February. So one week of February vacation and another week of school that we, the students and the teachers would miss. And we have yet to determine the dates, whether it's before or after the exchange, because we have to work out their school calendar and our school calendar, and theirs, theirs hasn't been finalized yet. So we've done that in the past years, it's been one week of school and one week of vacation, and including actually usually a block on the Friday, we miss part of a Friday afternoon, we usually leave around lunch or the last block of the day so that we can get a flight on a Friday to maximize our time while we're over there. So, many of your very intimately, have intimate knowledge of the exchange, have been involved with it, so we feel it's a great opportunity for the students to participate in, so again, this upcoming year, and we'd really request permission to miss that week of school.
How many, so it's a combined situated co-asset?
Yes, we combine because the school in France is much bigger and they have usually students who are kind of majoring, they're focusing on English as part of their, their studies, so, and it happened to be more of those than we have of French, so we would have to double up.
And I'm, I'm just curious about how many students are in the French program right now as opposed to Spanish, and how many you would anticipate having?
Uh, we have had a informational meeting, I'm not sure of the exact percentage, I know Spanish is higher, so I would, I would guess sixty, forty, but I haven't looked at the numbers exactly, that forty percent being in French. This year, we have had seventeen students turn in informational sheets.
Okay.
It is, in the, the last two exchanges, we've had forty students, we're not looking at that many this year, and for whatever reason, maybe enrollment's lower in both schools or interests or both, so. Tomorrow, we anticipate meeting with the freshman students who haven't, because of semester system, haven't had French yet, to let them know about it and see if they're interested. We don't take too many sophomores, but usually, you know, we, we have taken sophomores in the past, once we know their abilities and character. Yes.
Mr. Carter, is seventeen for us this year, has it been typically seventeen co-assets contributing to the number?
It's fluctuated from, I think the lowest was twelve and the highest was twenty-four. So seventeen is right, right in the middle, if, that's just if, if ten people are interested in it, we wouldn't start until January of actually, um, accepting applications and initial down payments, which we're there.
I want to add my support to the program, Francesca Wen, and it was a great experience for her. A lot of these kids, it's the first time they've been out of the country, and I think that it's a great growing experience for them. The young lady who stayed with us was lovely, I, we still hear from her, we're friends on Facebook, so we keep in touch on birthdays, and it's, it's a great opportunity for our children.
Well, it's nice to hear, although three years later, four years later now, close to, it's great.
She's a sophomore in college. Yeah, she was a junior.
Yeah, my son had a terrific experience, so, a soccer team loss in the metro, it was, everything else was.
It's challenging. With forty people, it can be a.
But he had his phone, so he was, he was okay.
That's right, now I remember, that's right.
Yeah.
I've got some.
I was gonna say, I must have.
That was one thing, we actually set up a overseas package program for the phone, which was twenty dollars a month, which I highly recommend that everyone does because it's easy way to run the money and.
Yes.
It was terrific, and we had the exchange student come to our house, you know, our house, and it was a very good experience.
That's right, they had the extended stay because of the hurricane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it one to one, is it seventeen, or?
Oh, yes, it was one to one. There has been occasional loose one because of somebody joining the program or leaving the program, they end up, might come and stay with us and not have a specific student over there or vice versa.
And as far as the price, can students do fundraising, if students aren't able to support this amount of money to travel, how would they be able to partake in a trip?
Um, that's an interesting question, we haven't done any fundraising in the past. I think that's something we could look into, um, ask the, yourself and the committee for guidance on how to go about doing that and determining who would be eligible and what kind of criteria would set for that.
I have to add though, that this particular trip is much more cost effective than other trips in the district, because we do, our students do stay with families, there are no hotels involved. And most of the other trips that are taken do involve hotels and can be actually twice as much as this trip, so it's pretty cost effective.
Mm-hmm.
That's, because of the airfare, it tends to go up about a hundred dollars per, per exchange, but that's the main factor, otherwise, all the other factors.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, I just had a fundraiser idea, just, I don't know, this is just something to think of, you know, a lot of people, you know, travel and things and earn a lot of miles, I know for, I have a ton of extra miles, maybe people would donate their miles to the, to the cause and save people that big airfare number. They could have a fundraiser of miles from people in the main community or something.
That'd be an interesting way to do it, we could work it out with the, the travel agent that we use the, for the group purchase, I'm not sure if it'll work, but that would be.
Yeah, so, if you buy them a lock, it might not work, but let's see.
Right, that's a great idea.
So the trip does require a vote on part of the committee, who says out of state and out of country, so.
So I'd ask for a, a motion to approve the French exchange student program for every year two thousand and fourteen?
Correct.
I have a motion to approve the trip to France, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, I think it's an awesome idea. And educationally wise, is the main way that people become fluent in language, I became fluent in Spanish partly because of multiple living situations and injury, so, and, and an extended stay of about four or five months, so. It's really one of the main ways that people become conversational and fluent, so I think it's an awesome idea.
Oh, second.
All okay, then?
Hi.
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 All right, all right, you thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Much love.
Yes.
So the, the next thing in your packet, which was the largest item, is the NEAS report that we're going to cover tonight.
And I read every page, it was a very important report and so many details, I hope everyone has to read everything about it, I took a lot of notes, and I think that there's, it's a good, um, combined with the school council meeting, I went at the high school where they talked and had some major issues about technology yesterday, it's crucial.
Right, and, and I know that Mrs. Conley's gonna come up, she has a PowerPoint presentation, and I know she will address things like the technology and, and the fact that some of these comments were made two years ago, and that's what showed up, and then post, by the time they actually came to visit, we had already redone the labs. But they said they have to use the original voice of what came through the year prior.
I have a quick question. But they did, excuse me, I'm sorry, but they did note that the labs had been updated, so.
Yes.
I have a quick question, when did this report come out, because we were supposed to see it within sixty days, this report did.
No.
This is within, this is within the window for sure, yes, we do that.
Oh, okay.
So it hasn't been long.
No.
It hasn't been shared with anyone beyond this, the superintendent has seen it, now you both, hasn't been shared with teachers yet, just like you've said. But your report is gonna, your report, the PowerPoint is gonna soon get it, so we're not gonna look at it exactly. Shall we?
Yes.
Um, so as Dr. Lee has noted, it's over seventy pages in length, and I knew you didn't want or need a reading lesson from me, so what we tried to do is highlight, um, just a little bit about the process itself, and then some commendations and recommendations for each of the accreditation standards, and I'm happy, obviously, to answer any questions that aren't addressed by the slideshow, but just wanted to talk about the things that we think are most relevant and, or on which we have something to report. So just as a reminder or sharing with folks who may not be familiar with the accreditation cycle, it's a ten-year cycle, so it's a decennial visit, but really the preparation is ongoing. So that the self-study, that the faculty and administration of the school being visited is supposed to do, really begins two and a half years before the visit. And then after the visit, which is the stage we are in now, I'll be required to submit a two-year report and a five-year report, so that the commission knows where we are on following some of the recommendations. So I'll just share that with you just for the sake of the process. The standards by which we are accredited or assessed are divided into both teaching and learning standards and support standards, and so they are obviously what they are, the first four really based in the classroom and in the functioning of the school. And the support standards are in school culture, school resources, and community resources, all of those support strands that help to hopefully make it a viable and exciting learning place. So the first standard by which we're judged, so to speak, is on core values and beliefs, and there were, for each of these standards, there were between four and seven commendations and recommendations, some of which frankly were redundant. And so where it was addressed within one, I didn't highlight it in the other, knowing that you have the full report and can reference it whenever you like. They really wanted to lob the, the faculty and the community for the process by which the core beliefs and values had been initially established, which was before my, my being here, but they were impressed at the record keeping that had been done and the development of the core beliefs. And also in the learning expectations that we delineated in our program of studies and are those by which we try to adjust curriculum and instruction in the building. So, of the recommendations that they made for core beliefs, one is that while it is a strong statement and they value the process, it's really important that we recognize that those things aren't permanent. And so as the school changes, as the school community changes, so do we need to really have a process in place for how long we look at that, I mean, how often we look at the core beliefs, and do they need revision? And it's particularly interesting for myself and for Mr. Scott and even Superintendent Cataldo to a point, because a lot of these things existed before we were here, and so to work with the people that were part of the process, you know, it isn't to say that we want to undo folks' work just to be cognizant of the fact that we need to be evolving as is appropriate. So I highlighted that because while we have a clearly demonstrated commitment to the current set, we also need to work with the faculty and with the school community to make sure that we are, have a process in place for reviewing those things. And frankly, that we are being true to them, that they're actually lived, yes, they're posted all around, but as is the case with many schools, the learning expectations are much more clearly evident in a lot of the instruction and lesson planning on a daily basis than the core beliefs. And to be candid, I didn't see a need to go through the building in the past year and a half and make sure all of the students memorized this statement, if in fact, it is, it seems not artificial to them, but if they didn't know it already, what would be the point? So I believe that they live the core beliefs and they're very aware of the learning expectations, even though our students don't necessarily recite it, you know, along with the pledge in the morning. But I think it's a very genuine, genuine statement of where the school would like to be and how it, you know, hopes that it exists. The second standard is that on curriculum, which I'm sure you're well aware, is really a district initiative this year, led by Superintendent and Mrs. Demus, this is really a push that we knew coming into the accreditation that the visiting committee would be very surprised that we didn't have a readily accessible curriculum that was all in the same format. We certainly have written curriculum, there were binders given to the visiting team, there were many opportunities for them to look through course descriptions and syllabi that go along with it, pacing guides, learning expectations, things like that. But for us to now go to the next step and use the Atlas Rubicon mapping software, which is where a lot of our professional development will, has already been spent, will continue to be spent, is really, it's quite an undertaking, but at the same time, it's very exciting. Because once that happens, we will have a beautifully formatted six through twelve curriculum map that will really help to, to set the standard around there. Um, so, all of the other things you read for themselves, I would highlight that the, that they really wanted to pay attention to the CEF's tremendous contribution to trying to support new programming that isn't necessarily initially built into a budget in trying to foster new programs, so that was nice. Um, so there we are with our, it's both a school improvement goal and a district strategic plan goal, they wanted us to talk about recommendation for curriculum development was creating an opportunity for staff to really talk about cross-disciplinary learning experiences. And it's something that certainly teachers are interested in and students do, and I think it's just a matter of creating space and opportunity to do that. And perhaps in the development of the curriculum, there will be discoveries made as to how things might naturally go along or cross over with each other, so we certainly look forward to that. And, you know, taking direction from Mrs. Demus as to where she would see those things as appropriate. In the instruction strand, they were impressed with our collaborative learning experiences, the vertical articulation of the tenth and eleventh grade English and social studies courses just means that our study of literature happens to go along nicely with our study of history in those years, so that sophomores might be taking European history or might be taking global studies, but they've already all had world history as freshmen. So when they do world literature in the tenth grade, they really have a basis from which to draw, and in the eleventh grade, the American lit and the US history go along beautifully together in chronological order. So recommendations that I felt were most salient or most meaningful to the steering committee and all the faculty that have worked on it, that they really thought should be reflected here. We want to be talking about instructional best practices within and across departments, so we spend dedicated time at both department meetings and as the school-based leadership team, which is the administrators and all of the department heads. We spend a lot of time talking about what that looks like in practice in the classroom, and would love to plan to go back or an opportunity to go to showcase best practices. Louise had talked earlier in the year about, about hoping to create a professional development opportunity wherein teachers could basically run little workshops that other teachers would attend. And it's been our experience that the closer to the classroom the professional development is, the more meaningful it is. And so we certainly want to, when we recognize that somebody has a tremendous ability to, to push kids' critical thinking abilities, or to ask great probing questions, or to allow students to demonstrate how they best learn, how they can best share their, share their learning with others, it's great to know that and to have a conversation with the teacher about it, but so much more powerful to be able to share that with the entire faculty and have people co-vidency little models of lessons being taught. And we do that now in practice in terms of saying to teachers who might be looking to improve their strategies or to newer teachers, you should really go watch so-and-so, he or she's particularly adept at one or another skill. But we would like to make that a more formal thing in the future, and I thought that was a good idea. The ability to apply knowledge to authentic tasks, the, part of what we've already done is revising the independent study screening and application process, which we did last year. When I came on board, so that those independent studies are not, they're more study and less independent, and so that kids can explore passions that are, they aren't able to explore during the school day, but with a really legitimate product. day, but with a really legitimate product. And that product has ranged from anything from a student creating a website to publishing a small book to having a guide for other students to explore a subject or to do a presentation to a department or administrators. So we've tried to raise the bar on what the process of independent study is, but really what are the kids doing within the independent study? And we have a young man in the corner over there who happens to be doing independent study in Arabic, which is fabulous because we don't have that skill here, right? And Reed's demonstrated that he's exactly the kind of young man who can go out and take initiative and it's something that he really wanted to explore before he went off to college to figure out if it might be something he wanted further study of. And we really want to encourage that kind of thing, so I'm sorry, Mr. Wester. And again, the cross-disciplinary work, which is supposed to be about examining student work too. And we've really worked with department heads this year to make sure that department meetings aren't about what's going on in the class without the evidence to look at it. So if somebody is sharing an idea or a concern or a problem, then bringing student work as evidence to say, here I wanted students to be able to demonstrate this particular skill, this was the assessment, how well did it go, poorly or better, what could I do better? And teachers hoping to collaborate with one another on ways to improve that. Assessment. The committee is very interested in the development of school-wide rubrics, which you'll see mentioned throughout several of the different standards. And so some of the discussion is around the school-wide rubrics as they pertain to our learning expectations, and some of it is around the provision of rubrics so that students know the specific learning goals and they are able to know and identify the learning goals before the actual instruction takes place. So we've established a data team at the high school and the middle school with department heads representing most of the disciplines, but with other teachers who have a real interest in that. And the few conversations that we've let off with are really about how do we analyze performance data? There certainly are many district measurements of it already, and what are we supposed to do with it? Because it's one thing to sit down and be able to quickly say by looking at, let's say, seventh grade math MCAS reporting, where are the weaknesses, where are our concerns, what do we think we need to do better? And I think that oftentimes teachers are very good at having those conversations and being able to make the connections, but the challenge is, does it actually come back to the classroom? What are you doing the next day, the next week, the next month, to make sure that those conversations are really reflected in instruction? And that is something that we certainly are working on to make it a more, a valid part of everything we do every day. And the creation of common assessments is, it's a goal of mine, it's certainly a goal shared by Carrie and Brian, that talk, beginning the conversation with departments, because in such a small school, it is up until, I would say, the past couple of years, the sixth grade social studies teacher was the sixth grade social studies teacher and the fellow who teaches sociology is the fellow who teaches sociology. So the assessments, whether they were benchmark or unit assessments, are really just about the teacher knows what's been taught in that room and maybe has taught it a certain way and knows how to assess kids or knows what the expectations are. So for our faculty to embrace the process of collaboration, we have history teachers that do it very well in US History I, because it happens to be one of those courses that's taught by several different people. But as we grow and as we've already seen us grow in the middle school with the split team now, we have two sixth grade teachers, we have two seventh grade teachers for things. This is really will be an offshoot of that. It will be inevitable that we need to be able to, for equity of learning, make sure that students are having the same experiences or being held to the same standard. And it will be, it will be a culture shift a little bit, not because teachers are not willing to give up the autonomy, but because it's just not something they've been trained or asked to do before. But it's something that I'm certainly committed to working on over time. School culture and leadership. The notes I would make on this are that the visiting team clearly had some challenges because the report was started before I existed, and not that the strand is about me, but it's inevitably kind of about me. So it existed before I started and then they were asking questions both about previous leadership in the building and current leadership in the building. And Carrie Sandler proved to be a resource that provided some continuum. So I know that she was sought out often by the visiting team to talk about changes, if there had been changes, and whether, you know, how people perceive them. And, bless you. And the thing that, of course, made us feel best about it was that, was the first one, that we provide students with a safe and positive learning environment, which certainly is our goal every day, one that is challenging, where students feel connected to us and feel that they know us.
What I liked about this section is the faculty morale has gone up big time. Super. Especially for someone who's been on the school for about four years, it's good to hear.
So we want to be working collaboratively to make sure that we challenge all students. My first day here, my opening day speech to teachers was that I knew the reputation of Cohasset to be a highly competitive school, where it was cool to be smart, where students wanted to achieve. And that it had been my experience that sometimes in environments like that, there was, there was such an accolade and such an emphasis placed on that, which is wonderful, that sometimes the students who work hard, do a good job, show up and do exactly what they're supposed to do, don't necessarily get those accolades all the time. So this, I can see that this rings true when we're working hard to make sure that all students throughout grade six through twelve at all levels of performance or ability are challenged. Because it isn't enough for somebody just to meet a goal, everyone should be pushed to the next level. And so we have the chaired support team that meets every two weeks that is chaired by Mrs. Sandler and Mr. Scott with all of the guidance team to talk about students for whom we have concerns, not because they are students who are necessarily struggling just in an academic area, perhaps in a social emotional area, or a student from whom we think we can get more and students we just want to kind of keep an eye on. So that's part of it. And we also talk a great deal at our department head meetings, at the school-based leadership team, about ways in which we can continue to meet the needs of all learners. And as is often the case in a lot of schools, students at the top end of the spectrum, the students who are struggling, get a lot of the attention. And there's a great, there's a great number of students who are, as I said, quite wildly competent, super, you know, want to work hard and just come in and we need to make sure that those kids are being challenged to the next level also. The commission also sees great, great importance in having at least one heterogeneous grouping of students, at least once in the high school particularly, during their career, and it can't be a phys ed. It has to be a core class, it has to be something in one of the disciplines. So this year we implemented that all freshmen now take a new course called Introduction to Research and Methods, which is taught by our librarian Teresa Conner, which you approved last year in the program of studies. And we will be able to assess at the end of the year and the beginning of next year based on assumed feedback from teachers, but also particularly the sophomore teachers and the students themselves as to what skills they've been able to take from that and apply. Because it's a quarter-long course, so all of our freshmen won't have cycled through, cycled through it until the end of the year. But it's, it's an exciting start in the right direction, I think. And really hopefully creates a space where particularly our humanities teachers don't have to spend as much class time away from content on basic research skills, because the students will not only have the skills, but they will have the same ones and be speaking the same language about how you assess the validity of a website, how you really talk about why would a site be worth visiting, where would you get your information from what's credible. And the evaluation instrument, as you well know, is on, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just one quick.
Please.
That's, it sounds like a nice offering to be able to have that. It fits well with the heterogeneous grouping. I'm curious though, why, what's the rationale and the perceived benefit of having heterogeneous courses? It's a recommendation they're making to do more of it. I was curious.
Because the belief is that students who are quote-unquote tracked or students who typically fall into one or another leveling of courses lose the opportunity to engage in discourse with students of varying ability levels or varying backgrounds and expertise. And so if you end up, let's say you're in an honors track for a particular subject or for two subjects, you generally end up traveling with similar groups of kids or even with the same kids. And it's really to make sure that everyone has as broad an experience as possible and doesn't find themselves going through four years of high school with the same twenty-five to thirty-five kids who typically end up in those same classes. And it's just for, you know, having taught both leveled and unleveled courses, I would say that it does bring a variety of interests and abilities to the table and just kind of different ways of approaching problem solving and different ways of thinking about projects and things like that. And it's just seen as a valuable tool, not just for the social impact, the cultural impact of the school, of students feeling that they get an opportunity to know all of the other students, and in our school it would be less unlikely that that would happen because it's small. But just seen, it's just seen as good practice, that you shouldn't, that students shouldn't be kind of pigeonholed into one particular realm for their entire career.
It's an interesting thing. I know it's obviously a charged topic, and I would just say that from my perspective, it would be nice to have an understanding brought to us when we, when we're going to make decisions to offer more courses. Research and Methods sounds like a perfectly appropriate way to combine groups, but something else might not feel right. So it'd be great to, if you could keep us abreast of.
If we ever were to entertain what would be the next course like this, it would be a conversation, obviously, with Mrs. Demas and the superintendent and with the school committee before it ever came to.
And with the whole state in town. We've already been down that path.
But it's, but I, I can't imagine, I mean, just speaking off the cuff, I can't imagine it would never be pervasive. I'm looking for a couple of opportunities for students.
Yeah, I, we've already been down this path. We've had big community meetings and the whole nine yards.
Very controversial.
Because the past administration wanted to basically make quite a few changes and make quite a few things heterogeneous based on, you know, differential wording and things like that. But the community response was not very positive, it was an understatement. So, but I think for research methods, you know, I think the community response, apparent response should be fine.
It was an introductory course, ninth graders, but also to the, that particular requirement in the school culture and leadership standard, if you do not have at least one heterogeneously grouped course, you are deficient in the rating. And so knowing, it was kind of a preemptive strike, I thought it was a good course for kids to take because I had seen some less than productive results in the eighth grade research assignments and said at some point we've got to pull everybody together to say we can all do this the same way and approach things the same way. But I also knew it would be, it would be kind of a strike against us if such a thing didn't exist. So in fact, there, it says to implement the plan, and now the plan exists. So they knew that when they were here, that the student, that we were rolling it out this fall, so it was kind of what we did. And the evaluation instrument, as you know, is in place and under Mrs. Cataldo's guidance, all of the buildings have started with the new evaluation tool. And we have found it to be interesting and certainly it's been kind of great in lots of ways because it has compelled us to be in a lot of rooms earlier than we might have and to be able to give teachers some more formal feedback than just, you know, kind of a quick stop in.
And the interesting thing about the evaluation tool, it's very rubric-based, so it'll tie nicely to, you know, assessments and things like that. Because if we're assessing faculty, we're assessing learners, you know, and everything is rubric. And that's very interesting, the popularity of rubrics, because when I studied to be an educator a number of years ago, it was popular then and we all did our little rubrics and it was popular for about four or five years and then it died, like a quick death. I don't know exactly why, and now it's back up again. So this is like almost bell bottoms. I mean, it was around in the sixties, no? Yes, and this is reappearing and everybody thinks it's new and cool. Please, do you remember? This was very popular for a while.
The huge one, yes.
Totally, University of Chicago did all this rubric stuff when I was an educator.
Even embroidered them.
Yes, exactly. And now it's back again, which I think is really interesting, you know, for that, it's seventy-five pages. I wish I hadn't dined for every time they mentioned the word rubric. You know, you did that word fine.
And of course, we often have, at the district-level leadership meetings, we often have discussions about the implementation and making sure that we're doing things in a consistent fashion across the board. School resources. So I highlighted or bolded, I should say, the library and nursing services, particularly because the school resources for learning is really about the support personnel in the building. So it's guidance, it's library, it's the nurse, and if you go out on a visiting team, they are always reluctant to have a visiting team visit a school that doesn't have at least a librarian on it, because this is the person that ends up being in charge of this standard because it's very comprehensive. There are many different facets of it because it tries to take into account all of these various support roles inside of the building. So they enjoyed the full inclusion model of the middle school and thought that students were really well-supported in those rooms. They particularly noted the variety of mechanisms that we're trying to use to communicate with parents and to keep people informed of things. And but really wanted to give Teresa Conner a nod for all the, for the apps that she has designed for use in the library and for students to be able to get those materials, whether or not they are in the library, which is a nice, which is a nice step in the right direction. And she's done a lot of work in and outside of school to make that happen. And obviously, Judy Conner's story is.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Okay. I'm just wondering what the impact might be of taking Teresa out of the library and putting her into the research classroom mode? Because there are other items that are noted in here about lacking resources in the library, monetary resources and text and book resources, not, not her abilities as a librarian, because she's phenomenal. And I feel badly that our, our students are possibly not getting to enjoy her skills as much if she's in a classroom setting with students.
And so the research and methods class is only one period of the day. And one of the things that I was most struck by when I first came to Cohasset was that our library was empty a lot of the day. Now, part of that is the result of the fact that neither the middle school nor high school students have study halls. So nobody's just dropping in, no free time. But what we really worked on last year was Teresa working with teachers in the classroom initially and then bringing them to the library to do research. And she is, has felt greatly encouraged in the past year to have to kind of broaden her network and has worked with many more grade levels and teachers on projects in the library. I would, the library is often utilized for teachers who bring in groups of students who need to be kind of compartmentalized and the classroom space doesn't allow for it. So I, I think that the library gets more use and that Teresa's skill set is more on display because she is doing a little bit more outreach with classrooms. And on a personal note, she's delighted to be teaching the course. She really enjoys it, she's really excited about it, she's really appreciative of the professional development we've had with Allen November, has pulled a lot of his recommendations into the, into the coursework. And because it's only a quarter a day, we want to be appreciative of the fact that we do want her to be a resource for other classes. So hopefully, hopefully we're striking a balance where all of the students feel that she's, our teachers feel that she's accessible to them and she's still able to perform all of that work, while at the same time really getting to utilize what is a unique skill set in the building, because lots of teachers might assign a research topic and she's so adept at finding the good sources and helping students get them, that I'm hoping that it's a good balance.
I attended her presentation where she spoke about all the digital changes in the library and it was fascinating.
Yeah, she's done a good job.
And she's very talented.
Yes, and seeks out opportunities beyond school a lot.
Absolutely.
To meet with people, other professionals in the library community, as it were. IPASS and the portal will go together. There certainly is district-level conversation about opening the parent portal, which I'm sure you are aware of, I've mentioned that school maybe in the past, a month or so. And we've provided some voluntary in-house training recently to any teacher who wanted to become more proficient in use of the grade book in IPASS. A teacher on staff who's very proficient in it offered those workshops after school, so do another one in January for interested, for interested teachers. And I would predict that, that the superintendent and Mrs. Demas would provide a more comprehensive training to people if and when we decided that this was going to be what teachers needed to do, you know, as needed, as teachers expressed a need for training. The last recommendation there is elided, so that in your recommendation sheet, that it was a really long blurb. So it really isn't just about guidance counselors being able to talk, I mean, students being able to talk to guidance counselors about course selections. It was about charting a course, about performing a relationship. And we have really taken that on, the three of us in the guidance team, to, you can see that it's one of my school improvement goals for the year, and that the guidance department has already revised the timeline by which we talk to students, not only about scheduling, but about the college process or the post-secondary process, whatever is the students' wish. But to make certain that junior year is not the first time that our kids are having a conversation with the guidance counselor and/or and/or ensuring that the guidance counselor knows the kid's name. Because we really believe that there is no reason why in a school this size, that even though the guidance counselor's student loads might be two hundred kids or in the middle school, almost double that now. They really need to be able to have that relationship. And, and so the scheduling, the college search at the high school would really, would really work hard to try to make that a better process, to start the kids sooner. So it used to be that students halfway through sophomore year got their NABEANS accounts and started to do the kind of employment survey, figure out what you might be good at, the career survey. And this year, the freshman will get it before they go home for the summer. So we're, we're just, we're nudging it back as much as we can and still make it reasonable, but we know, we know it's a need. And one of the things that was mentioned by the visiting team was that with the growth of the enrollment, that perhaps in the future, the middle school, you know, one counselor won't be sufficient. But that's, but that's something for the future, obviously.
Just wanted to mention one thing about that. I think the, the way the, the school is structured, a lot of the kids stay in the school for a long time. So it's extraordinarily helpful if there's a new guidance person to talk to the other guidance person that's there because oftentimes, the kids track from, you know, first grade on all the way through. There's transfers in, but not all that many. I notice when I, when I do college interviews, I know the kids really well because I know them. And I think that's a huge portion of the guidance, is that they see a very stable class that goes through. And I think that is extraordinarily helpful. So that even though there may be a new guidance person, there's an awful lot of information that's there that's, I think, quite helpful because the stability of the students, they stay in the, you know, in the school for a long time.
And we're hoping that, that, that stability or that awareness of students and their backgrounds will be, will be supported by the guidance office, the guidance suite now, Kate Nelligan being with the other guidance counselors. There are many, many conversations we have with students that would never become part of a record. But how easy to say, gee, I saw so-and-so was in your office earlier. It was very, you know, interesting thing happened in seventh grade. So now she, she really has that background on the middle school students. But we also wanted to make certain that Kate Nelligan, as the only middle school guidance counselor dedicated, didn't feel that she was operating in isolation. So that now hopefully create a team, you know, a team network up there that way they feel supported by one another but can also look at these kind of larger goals to say, boy, that's a lot of work for one or two people. But together and under Maureen Duffy's leadership as the department head, hopefully, they can achieve those goals. And the last standard is the community resources for learning, which talks about funding and facilities. And particularly wanted to highlight the CEF and PSO and booster groups who support our programs. But also, as you can see, the food service and the nursing services, all of the other things that come from beyond the classroom to support student learning. Did you see the nod there that all of the parents of Cohasset got at the bottom? Which I have seen many reports and I've never, you want to go back to a second? I've never seen that actually mentioned in a report. Okay, that, these, the parents of Cohasset are very supportive and actively involved in the children's education, which I thought was a very interesting thing to include and certainly worth highlighting for you here. So one of the recommendations is the ongoing provision for adequate funding for technology, provisional, professional development, library materials and curriculum revision. And I included there the library and curriculum because some of our greatest expenses in the budget process are really the replacement or reconsideration of curriculum materials. Textbooks are expensive. Even if we are only doing classroom sets of textbooks and we're looking to get our online licenses for the students, it, we know it takes a tremendous amount of money for the, for the community and for the school committee to dedicate to us. But constant revision of the curriculum or examination of it, making sure that it's valid is, is one of the ongoing recommendations, obviously. And the library budget proposed for next year also includes the necessary databases that our kids need access to, to do, to do legitimate research, right there. Again, the student information system with the open parent portal, and that's a little bit redundant, but it was mentioned in several places, so I included it in too. And I know it's a, it's an interesting and energetic conversation that's happening all over the place. And the improved management and maintenance of the facilities in and around the building. We work with Mr. Dejanaro and Mark Kelly, as well as Bob Tesher and John Danielson, to do walkthroughs of the building. And Mr. Scott oversees the fact that they walk through the building regularly to look for safety concerns, look for areas that need improvement and report those areas of concern to the appropriate parties. And sometimes those are in the district and sometimes those are at the town level. So we just, when we can handle it, we do. And when we need help, we ask, we ask for who's the person that can help us best.
I guess reading the report that, you know, when we just talk about, you know, safety needs, you know, safety thing, that was what just kind of blew my mind a little, how we need to really work on that. That there are some fire hazards. It talked about it in the seventy-two page report. That there's, you know, chairs and dust in different places. Our boilers haven't been inspected according to what they said. I hope, you know, they did say that's true. So, and we're just behind in too many things.
They do do a really thorough inspection of kind of behind the scenes facility store, several of the.
They did.
Yeah.
They did.
And I think that's really good. And I think that should be one of the first things that we call attention to. Because without a safe environment, all these educational curriculum goals aren't worth the paper they're printed on. So, you know, I, I was very concerned about the safety in the school after reading this report.
None of the fire hazards still exist.
That's good to know.
And when, when, we had a lot of, well, you would have approved the disposal of some of the items a few months ago, I think. We had a lot of equipment in the building. We had a lot of storage areas that weren't supposed to be storage areas and things that took a long time to figure out what's the appropriate way to dispose of it and, and or who, who was responsible for, owns the equipment. Because somebody has invested dollars in something, we can't just kind of toss it. But we did a lot of work in the spring and over the summer, divesting ourselves of unneeded stuff.
Did we get our boilers inspected and all kinds of old things?
That is beyond my purview. I would defer to Dave.
All that is inspected yearly, you know, like, elevators are inspected.
Yeah, in the report, they said there was no evidence of that.
Summer. Well, I don't know where all the inspections are kept, but I know the inspections are done.
Okay, so we need to.
A lot of them are kept by.
Okay, so.
And actually, you might ask Mr. Kelly.
I don't know why they weren't giving them the report.
Yeah.
Mr. Scott, and Mr. Scott can speak to that, I think.
Some, some of the issues is, the ownership is very distributive here. So we are, even, you know, the question earlier about fixing the clock. I don't, I don't really have that authority to fix it, that the facilities thing. So there are some people who are responsible for, Mark Kelly and his group is responsible for eleven buildings in the town. He prioritizes his work. So if I have a classroom with ETE, I can report it to Mark, but I don't really have much authority beyond that.
But we need evidence of it because that's how things slip through the cracks. Like, for instance, the school does not automatically maintain up-to-date documentation that the physical plant and facilities meet all applicable federal and state laws and are in compliance with local fire, health and safety regulations. For example, the elevator, boilers and water tank inspections are expired. And there's no evidence of fire safety inspection reports. In past evaluation reports, there were inadequacies with storage, you know, goes on about the storage. They're not as worried about that. Can we correct it? But if indeed there's evidence, then we need to see it. I mean, they, they need, should have seen it. They're going to certainly ask for it in the follow-up. And it's just a little disconcerting to read that, that's all.
But I think my point is that's not something that the school building, that we have ultimate control of. Even similar to the school.
I realize you may not have control of it, but you are here. And you have control to make sure that the people who are supposed to do it. You know, I, I, I think that the bottom line is, you know, our principal is the CEO of the building, okay? And even though the fire department may have the report somewhere like that, we, I'm sure the principal sitting in her office wants to make sure the place is safe. And if she got a report like this, I assure you, you want to make sure that what they have as concerns are attended to. And I, I'm glad that they did such a, you know, a specific report. You know, our family went through hell and we don't want that to happen in Cohasset High School because you, you weren't the one in charge. The bottom line is the building needs to be kept safe. They said that applicable federal and state laws have not been complied with, and that's disconcerting. And even if it is not, you know, the principal's responsibility to actually have that, I'm sure you want to make sure that the building you are, are all residing in. We don't want to fall through the cracks and say, it's this person's fault or that person's fault when we have the problem, that's all.
I mean, I think we probably check the, probably the fire department, probably after inspection.
I don't know where the reports reside, but inspection or all.
Find the, yeah, find the copy and post it in the.
I think you should require every department that does inspections to give a report to the schools.
Exactly, to the principal.
I mean, I, it's, it's, uh, um, maintenance one-on-one.
Exactly.
And I'm really surprised you don't have it. I might do some looking around.
I presume it's somewhere. This question's probably where, probably in the fire department.
I'm sure they've done it. I mean, the, the fire department is very.
Yes, that's interesting.
Could I maybe suggest that you provide a copy of this to Mark Kelly? So that he can maybe even highlight the areas that were noted, the safety areas that were noted, just so that he's aware and he can address them. I mean, any elevator that's inspected has to have the inspection physically located in the elevator. So if it's not there, why is it?
They probably didn't see it, you know.
I think that he could probably.
Mark's aware of it, we are aware of it. Mark's done three or four times a day, so.
I'm sure that if, if he had a copy of this, he could answer the questions and it would go away. He could fix it.
Do you, what, what can we do to support you? Because it sounds like there are some basic things that, connections that can be made, town, school connections. Are there things that you guys, that we can help you with to create liaisons that aren't there? There's, these are small things I know to resolve, you know, it's keeping a file here, keeping a file there, keeping electronically something. But if the work's being done and we need to prove it, or we need to be aware of it, or we need maybe to help prioritize it, because if Mark has eleven other buildings, this isn't necessarily priority one. Is there anything we can do to facilitate better results?
Well, maybe one of the things I can just interrupt and ask, did they ever ask you for the reports before they actually wrote them up? Did they come to you and say, we can't find any of these things? Do you know if they've happened? And that's part of what I want to comment on. Because one of the things I had the opportunity, when I was interviewed, was to discuss the technology. Because as you know, much of the technology shows that we look like we're underprepared. The initial voice from the teachers, where in my first year, we were underprepared. By the time the committee came to start looking at us, they acknowledged in my interview that, yes, we are preparing. But at the same time, I asked them, what could I show them about, to show, demonstrate that we were making changes? They said, absolutely nothing. Everything is great. And yet, some of the very issues that are in this report about the TV monitors and so forth, they didn't even ask us if we had a plan for ridding ourselves of these items. Now, you know that we had recently, the trucks coming cart away many, many old computers. And it was a matter of having a plan. But we weren't asked to, and I'm not pointing, but just to say, that we offered some information and they declined some of it from us.
And in this case, we couldn't have produced it if we, if they asked.
If we didn't know they didn't see it, we wouldn't have known to say, okay, we'll go get you the inspection.
So anyway, it just seems like a very easy solution to create a link between building, fire, police and us. So who should, who does, who do that?
I would say that tomorrow, we have a leadership meeting, that let me take that to the leadership meeting and I'll speak with all the principals about it as the starting point.
And just one more comment, right on the tank, it should just say when it was last inspected. Right on the elevator, it should say. So obviously, when they went there, it didn't say. So we don't want, in case of a crisis, for them to be, oh, where do we find it? It should be right there, right on the tank. So if it's been a problem, you know, this is good. This is why we have these things happen, these reports. Because it shows us, maybe we've done it, maybe we haven't. But we certainly don't want anybody who's coming in from the outside in an emergency situation to like, oh, where's the paperwork? And then it should be right there on the table.
I'm sorry, just one last point. And along the same lines, things like, you know, if you can't get the clock fixed or whatever, you know, it seems like we need to be able to have somebody do it and not fall down on some list, you know? So I don't know, again, when you, when you talk to the leadership.
We'll work on that tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know that we can get things done.
Sure.
The mayor likes to, he doesn't really love dealing with potholes. But when the pothole's fixed on somebody's street, they feel like the mayor's doing the job.
Right, and tomorrow will be the perfect opportunity because we'll have everybody in one room and we can collaborate on ideas.
It's what people seek sometimes. But in this case, they don't, they wouldn't know what they will, like, the water tank or whatever.
No, 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 it's very worthwhile conversation. It is a concern. And we'd love to, as, as a school department, be able to streamline to whom we're supposed to be reporting things, beyond the superintendent and/or what things we folks are willing for us to take on under our control. And make sure that we have all the necessary documentation.
I just have a question regarding, this is tremendous in its entirety. And most of it is really quite positive and we're clearly moving in the right direction. Do you have plans to share the results of this or portions of the result? Perhaps specifically community resources with any other boards in town?
I have intentions of sharing it with whomever would like, but you need to be the primary audience.
Obviously, but as, as I'm thinking, as we prepare for budget conversations and things like this, it's important for the other boards to understand the proportion of money we get from organizations like the CEF and the Booster Clubs, that our technology is in the right direction, but it's still not where it needs to be. That we have adequate resources in the library. I mean, all of these.
So we have four bound copies such as this prepared for the Pratt Library that will be delivered tomorrow now that it's been, you know, publicized. We'll certainly post it on the website for people to read. And at your direction and the superintendent's direction, I will happily email and deliver a hard copy to whomever you like. And get everyone involved in our process. That'd be great.
I think probably the capital budget and the budget budget.
And the school councils, obviously.
Yes, of course.
And what would the timeline be? Because I did read it in the final letter, the transmittal draft, that it, it does need to be, once it's finalized, it needs to be made public. So what would the final release timeline be like?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
My plan is tomorrow, but it really needs to just be presented here first. And then, you know, tomorrow, tomorrow morning, we would post it. And so copies are ready to go to the library, tools in the school library.
And you will put it on the website.
Oh, yes.
Excellent.
It's already, it's in a four-part PDF. I've just got to get it ready together.
Okay.
And so our next steps are awaiting the rating. All of this work and all of this writing and all of this reporting back, we've not gotten a letter that says that we have been renewed, that accreditation has been continued, as they call it. So the options would be that our accreditation was continued with a traditional two- and five-year report, that our accreditation is continued with a special progress report that they would want within a year if they had some serious concerns, and/or that they would have a conversation with us about being on probationary stats. The commission met the, in October and November to talk about all of the public high schools and middle schools that had been visited in the previous spring. I went to a follow-up conference that was required to attend in November to talk about the follow-up status. And I asked the question, if the commission met in October, why in the world would I wait till January for a letter? And well, there's plenty, you know, plenty to talk about. So they presented their findings. They present a rating on each of the standards and an overall recommendation to the commission as to whether or not our accreditation ought to be continued. We will not ever know the individual ratings per standard. But the commission will just send us a letter saying, your accreditation has been continued or it's been continued with these provisions. So that, hope that could happen, but, you know, within the next week or so. I was told at the latest January. So as soon as I have that, she will have that, you will have that. And then after that, we have a two- and five-year targeted plan that we, that we use to send the reports off to the association. And then, yeah, not to really forecast too far in the future. But in 2020, we can start another self-study for a 2023 visit. Sounds smashing. So I'm happy to take questions that were addressed by that, that weren't. And obviously, if you have any of that, don't come up with this, but at the moment, we can follow up whenever you would like.
Just a statement. I agree with Mary that all in all, it's a fantastic report. I think we have an incredibly strong, strong district. In particular, in terms of improvements in the last three, four years, the work back to morale, the organizational system, our tech plan is now in place. The involvement of parents, big time. And the. The involvement of parents big time and the, uh, academic excellence is continuing to be as higher, higher than it's ever been. And I do think, you know, that we're, have become even stronger at meeting the needs of all students, partly because our curriculum is more organized from K through twelve. And there, there's sense in it all. I mean, now we're going to put in, in the fancy Rubric language, but I think Louise and staff have been doing all the foundational work and it's there. Now we just have to tell it, say how we did it. But I think that's, that's really doing a remarkably amazing job. And we're doing it, um, in a very cost-effective way, as they mentioned, below the average per student cost, uh, around, you know, in, 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 in the state.
Well, in the state and, and the region as well, as well as the top twenty.
Yes, yes, the state and in the region.
As well as the top twenty, yeah.
I think it was thirteen thousand, whatever, is it, was it five, eight hundred dollars less per student?
Good for the year.
Yeah.
Yes, which is remarkable. It's one thing to do it well and spend ten thousand dollars or three thousand dollars per student more, but to stay within a budget and do it below the average in the state and still be as remarkable, that, that's pretty amazing. And I realize we have room to grow. We need to, to do some things better. And the special ed in particular, it seems like we've got a handle on that big time.
I also want to just comment on page fifty-seven is the, the survey according to what the professional staff feels that they're actively engaged parents, seventy-eight percent. While only twenty-eight percent of the parents feel that the professional staff is actively engaged.
Right.
Honestly, I mean, I've never had a problem getting in touch with any of the teachers and the interaction, I just, twenty-eight percent seem, I, there must be something that's. I've never had problems getting in touch with the teachers and having them call back. There's interaction with after-school night, arts night, um, all sorts of things. So I, I guess maybe the survey was, you know, I wonder how the survey was structured because.
Sometimes it's the participation rate. Well, sometimes it's who bothers to participate in the survey. And I think that, not, well, has it in particular, but life is such that folks who are disappointed or upset about something are more apt to weigh in than people who are quite content. So not knowing the personality of the data, that would just be my observation.
I have one little picky detail that we discussed when the program of studies came out. The fact that there are so, it's so thick, there are so many different offerings and this report seemed to address the fact that there are a hundred thirty-two offerings, but only seventy of them have aligned curriculum. Are you still working on kind of riddling back some of those offerings that are in the program of studies? Because we talked about that at a previous meeting, that you're working on, maybe going.
Fine tuning and making sure they're accurate for sure.
Exactly.
That they're appropriate to our twenty-first century learning expectations. And, um, things that seem to us obsolete will cer, can certainly go away. My reluctance to, um, take away a course that's already been in existence or met with approval is that it would be perhaps difficult to add it back in. And if there ever was, for instance, global studies wasn't particularly subscribed to this year, but I know in the past has been a retaliating experience for kids. So things that are current and, and that we recognize as having value, we certainly want to keep in, but it doesn't need to become a tone of history.
But perhaps we could organize the program of studies differently so that we have the core courses that we know we're going to offer and then others that we have potential capability to offer. So the people aren't, aren't like.
So almost like an appendix or something.
Right, so the people aren't misguided into thinking, oh, the kids have all these opportunities, but we really don't have a teacher for this class and that class. And so why would we have curriculum that's developed for it? So that particular comment in here kind of, it, it just stood out to me.
Yeah, one of the things where you have the virtual high school, you can use, if there's not a teacher available, those, um, those that are available through that. So you don't want to limit your, you don't want, you don't want to limit, you don't want to limit your courses studies if, um, they're available. It's a matter of the initiative.
Right, but that's, that speaks to my point. I'm just saying that if it were organized a little bit differently, it might be a little bit clearer for people, you know, where those, where those courses fall. That's all. I remember being very impressed when my oldest daughter came, was in eighth grade, and we came to a, an information session for high school. And the head of the science department got up and, and I think there were a hundred twenty-two science offerings and I thought, wow, how could they possibly do that? Well, we can't.
They didn't.
We can't. That's misleading. It's crazy. You have this big PowerPoint presentation with all of these science course offerings on it and it, it doesn't work that way. So I just think that it would be a good thing to clarify for people and by organizing the program that does that, it answers that question.
One of the things we're going to try to do this year too is to advertise the courses a little bit better to students.
That would be good.
So that they know what they are. Because some of those courses have to run for a little while so they don't have an upper class when you tell them, you know, take GIS for the, for the.
Right.
Amazing.
It's a great course.
Yeah.
Yeah, amazing.
So the courses that we didn't run this year were just because the, the, it was, it was lack of interest, not lack of our ability to teach them. Uh, but we do, we are making a point to do it, to do it this year.
Right, well, to Dr. Schubert's point though, virtual high school is great, but it's not for every, every student.
Right.
So not every child wants to be a self-guided learner.
Or, or should be.
Or should be, exactly, exactly.
And it's interesting you mentioned GIS. One of the things they talked about is bringing in, um, your graduates.
Mm-hmm.
And giving, they would give you some feedback about what courses are really helpful moving forward. GIS is hugely helpful. I mean, kids could get summer jobs if they take a GIS course that's, you know, accredited and organized closely. And they could get a significant salary doing just that. And some of the feedback from, also from our, uh, graduates talking about how, you know, there are certain AP courses that are really important, like AP physics, that if you don't have that, maybe you're going to Georgia Tech. We've had people go to di, uh, different tech schools, uh, Rensselaer, different places, they're behind the eight wall. And they don't think about it, say, oh, I can wait, I don't have to take it, but it will, will, it could have really helped you. So I think we need to use our alumni to help us on that. And as far as what Dr. Schubert said, I think, uh, listening to the school council meeting yesterday, I think part of it could have to do with our communications and the tech problems, with our website, with, you know, the parent portal, with the communications between the students and the faculty and the parents and things like that. We're, we just don't think, have things working as well as they need to be. And there were some middle school teachers who were saying they were incredibly frustrated with the website. They, they basically have their own portals or they've designed their own communication, um, and it's different for every teacher and how they're doing it because, you know, it, it's just not working system-wide, district-wide. So I think once we get that worked out, I think you may have a higher, uh, rating in terms of, you know, what parents think about in terms of faculty and have communication and, and getting to know what's going on. And we're in high school. We're not in elementary school, so we don't have room ops anymore. I mean, it's getting used to developmentally, you know, I, I don't really, I'm not gonna, I'm used to having such and such communication like in Deer Hill and that. And it's hard for especially middle school parents to get used to the fact that, um, the kids don't want the parents to communicate.
Other questions for me? Thanks so much for your time.
I'm sorry, I was, no.
Um, follow-up question. Um, so we can, can talk about, is there a way to get to the school council at the high school or tech department?
Yeah, I think there were some emails going back and forth today about that very topic.
Okay.
I think Mrs. Conley and Mrs. Bannell.
I had my, my phone me online on that, that if they, it didn't get done, that I was going to.
No, Mrs. Conley has already contacted Mr. Bannell on that presentation.
Didn't want to contact. Okay. Okay. So, if people just want to know what we're doing.
I do have one more question for Mrs. Conley. There was a recurring theme in here about insufficient time for common planning at the high school. Do you have any thoughts on how you can facilitate that?
Um, I think that department-wise, because of the, again, the small number of, of teachers in each of the departments and the way that the scheduling to work for flexibility, um, it's unlikely that we would ever have, all of those teachers are on period one. But certainly, we're looking at creating time for the same grade level teachers or teachers in the same course to be able to have common planning time. And that would be a step in the right direction. That would be, I think, more useful in the, in the short term. And then really asking that some of the department meeting time, which is already allocated for, is spent on actual construction and planning.
And when in the course of a day is that, um, department meeting time?
They, they meet after school.
After school.
And, and to be honest, most, uh, depending on the department, our science department eats lunch together, our math department eats lunch together, the sixth grade team eats lunch together. So that, so that, um, obviously is, is more built into the middle school schedule, but there are opportunities for informal collaboration throughout the day. But we recognize that we would like to make it a more formal thing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is the, uh, proposed visitation policy.
What policy?
The visitation policy.
Oh, right, yes, yes, yes.
Uh, so last time when we met.
Sounds like divorce court.
No, no, no. Uh, last time when we met, we did the visitation policy and you did a first read and so there were no changes recommended. So here we are tonight to do the second read. And if the committee's in agreement, then it would just become the visitation policy, not the proposed visitation policy.
Yeah, I read it last time, but I'd like to read this one.
Okay, I do have a suggestion that it needs to be put in the appropriate format as our other policies are and assigned, there must be some kind of a coding system.
Right, it's KI. It's not here. I'm just making sure it's on there.
Okay. So in order to, you know, as I said, align with the rest of the school committee policies, it should, those things should be done.
Yeah.
Once we've voted on it. I also made a comment that this doesn't address anything outside of normal school hours. So we really need to look at that too, maybe separately.
In what way? If I need help there?
Uh, building access during, outside of school hours for parents coming in and then, you know, accessing whatever they access after school. Okay, so as I said, this really deals with during the school day.
Mm-hmm.
Signing in visitors to classrooms, um, to the office, to administration. This doesn't speak to the after-hours visits.
Okay.
So, but we, I mean, we do need to look at building access outside of school hours because we have a lot of things going on here after school. So maybe we could see if there's something in another district, however they handle it.
Okay, glad to check on that.
And then the proven ball will also like the, um, the field because there's a lot of outside of district stuff around the field and turf and, uh, places as well. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the, uh, visitation policy.
I have a motion to propose, uh, uh, proposed visitation, uh, proposed visitation policy.
Is there a second?
As stated in summary, eighteen thousand thirteen.
I'll second.
Oh, in favor?
Can I ask one discussion point?
Sure.
Just because we don't have the lobby guard everywhere yet.
Mm-hmm.
Should we, just to be precise, should we just say lobby guard if available or something? Are we gonna have it in every?
It will be in every building.
It will be.
Soon though, right?
Um, I'm presuming the day will be sooner, the Oscar will be last only because of the construction of the doors.
Okay, so you think it's fine just like it is?
I, I do, but I also respect the committee's decision.
It usually you need a policy before you put it in, so.
If it's sooner than.
Right. It's how, we have a plan.
You need, you have a plan and then a policy and then a procedure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
It's a decent concern, but we, that's kind of how the districts work.
Policy first.
Then install.
Sounds good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Like before you have a key, you need a plan, right? Like, we're to get.
And the, uh, next up is the technology network access and acceptable use policy.
So, yes, so there's a number of policies here. They're all first reads tonight. There's four of them. I think your original packet had two and then you were sent an additional two and, and because I wasn't, um, sure if you had to put two on, the two that were missing on your table here and what you received in the mail on Sunday morning. So you, uh, might want to take it one by one, uh, and start in the order that they're here, which is the technology network access, access and acceptable use policy. E D C A dash C, it's first read. It looks like this. If you have any questions, help out. I don't know if it does.
It, it is very interesting because of the school council meeting yesterday, that's what we're talking about.
I know it was. You were just, one day too soon, I saw that.
Yeah, and I said, well, we have to work that out, you know, because we have Wi-Fi here in the middle school. Where else? We have it, um.
Wi-Fi's everywhere.
No, in Deer Hill and, and, yes, that's what I thought.
It's been everywhere.
So, you know, people were asking, because I guess there are some breaches of it, you know, and so you have to kind of, you have to have a policy.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And this is a preemptive move in that as we move forward, looking at the types of technology coming to the district, if we're looking to do a one-to-one initiative, you're better off having your policy in place before you start it.
Right, makes sense.
One point on the policy is just that, um, a lot of people have said, you know, this is great, we have wireless, but I don't know the password and I can't get on it. And I'm wondering if we can have an open access policy, you know, uh, I know you have to separate your, your private files in your network that needs to be password protected, but much like a hotel lobby or a city that offers wireless, there, there's not a password requirement. And it would be nice if we could have that because people come into the school and, well, one for, for safety, it would be good too because they can't use their cell phone, they can't, parents are trying to find each other at a certain event, they can't access it unless they have an obscure password that they don't know where it is. And even if you do know where it is, it doesn't work sometimes, like, like, like I have my phone right now. But, um, so can we propose to have a password-free, uh, partition to the, to the wireless network?
I will, I know it's not in the plan right now.
Right.
I mean, I'll be glad to talk to Mr. Bannell about what your wish is and see what he says and come back and report to you.
Appreciate it. It's, I know IT guys like he will not like the idea, but at the same time, it's a common policy, it's a common practice.
Uh, excuse me, what are you suggesting? You mean some places in the building?
To have, frankly, to have everywhere access without a password-protected requirement. That's not to say that certain servers and areas, you know, uh, there, there shouldn't be a second set for perhaps teachers or something that does need to be password protected. But much like a hotel, uh, the back office, you'll see Hotel X back office, password protected. Hotel X, uh, public.
Correct.
Unprotected.
Correct.
So, um, it needs to keep the protection where it's required, but it's an easy step to make it unprotected as well. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
We have to ask Rob something.
Yeah, I have a note here to ask him.
Because it's virtually unusable for ninety-five percent of the people and the fact that we have it is worthless for ninety-five percent of the people, you know?
Yeah, there's places like Philadelphia.
Well, it may not be permanently useless if we get one-to-one technology and all kinds of other things.
Well, practically speaking today and for the foreseeable future, it's worthless.
Because there, there's places like, like Philadelphia, certain blocks that are available for free Wi-Fi basically, cameras and that.
So you can't.
Or if you run a business, they have exactly, they have a password protected.
Right, and our business, we have, nobody can get into this one.
But there's a free Wi-Fi.
And a tree on the other.
Cool.
Okay, that would be a huge step forward, I think, and I think a lot of parents and people that would want to use it could. And it would be really convenient to be able to text people and communicate with people when you're in the concrete walk.
I will, um, certainly, when I see him tomorrow, present that to him, and then I'll have to get back to you.
A personal appeal.
I'll see if I have a chance to do it, buddy. Yes, okay.
Good luck with that.
If he says no, yes.
But I read it. I read this pretty thoroughly and I would propose to, um, adopt it, adopt it.
Yeah, typically takes, takes two, one to show and then.
Yeah, so this is just our first one.
Yes.
I would normally read it, but it's rather.
Yeah, no, no, I, I would say.
But I will not.
So this will be the first reading of the technology network access and acceptable use policy. We'll redo it next.
And the companion piece.
Next meeting and that'll be the second that we can vote on.
Right, and the companion piece is student-parent network access and technology agreement. So the students and parents know too, and so I read it, makes sense.
And so, so I've written this as the first reading for that and then we'll go back to the next meeting.
Right.
And if there are no significant changes, um, we can go ahead. This will be very helpful, I think, just to, to have the available understanding before we get everyone up and running.
Right.
And I've shared these with Mr. Bannell too.
What's that?
I've shared them with Mr. Bannell as well.
Uh, the next one up is the technical ministry using laptop computers in other schools on technology regulation. You know, I think this is important because if, if you're giving out the computers to the teachers and you want to make sure that you can maintain them and there's no software that's in there that may foul up the other ones that, I can tell you with electronic medical records, if you put in new software that isn't compatible, it is a nightmare, um, when you have to run a certain system. So I think that's reasonable.
A lot of this too is also based on some past cases. A lot of this too is also based on some past case law of what's happened in other districts when emails and and devices went unmonitored, so this is really an attempt to try to close as many gaps as we might in the system to protect folks.
So this will be the first reading, and then we can address this next meeting, we can potentially, if there are no significant alterations, uh go ahead.
And then the the last one is the home use of laptop computers and other school-owned technology, it's the greatest of them all.
Right.
No, I still won't read it.
That's okay.
And we read it and approve it next time.
Yeah.
Yes, I do know if there are any comments or questions at this moment.
Any comments on?
No, it's just very simple.
Okay.
Are we contemplating fees? I saw they were left blank.
Because that would be up to the committee to decide. I mean, it's one concept is to have a technology fee yearly in a revolving account to cover all of the expenses of the technology, but that's a, I think, a discussion for the committee to have. In addition, if the committee believes that it is the right thing to do, that the committee decides the fee.
We do that next meeting?
I think so, yeah, I like to have, you know, I wanna think about that, we have a lot of fees in the, you know, in the community, we have a lot of fees in the schools. You know, at what point do the fees become either necessary or not necessary? And something like technology, um you know, there's always a question, breakage fees, you know, is there insurance that you put in the insurance for the for the software, for the hardware that you have carrying around, if you drop and break it, I mean, it's not, you know, a lost book, it's a lost computer or shattered computer.
Right.
Then that's a big piece of change, you don't wanna have the child-
I think we should put that on hold, we don't have one-to-one technology yet, so we don't know what we're talking about in terms of fees or anything.
Right, so, you know, think about the other districts have it, some don't.
Yeah, yeah, we have to, we need research for it, when we get the-
Well, before we go to the next, because you you had said, let's um, let's have this as the first read, the E D C A D as the first read, since that does involve the technology fee, you might want a little bit more of a discussion now to decide if you want this separated out and have this into separate policies or you, you know, where you have just the beginning part of the student responsibilities ended at on page two after uh the the last bullet and then begin another policy as a technology fee or have that as an addendum at a later moment. I mean, this is up to the committee, but I don't want to just pass this over now as a first read and then come back and ask you to vote because once you vote on this, you've agreed to a technology fee, whether you've agreed to an amount or not.
You wanna, you wanna split that?
I think that's a good idea. Uh I think that's uh good to split.
Yeah, why don't we um take out?
We may have a generous benefit.
Uh ask for a motion to split the uh student parent network access and technology agreement.
Technology.
The first page and a half and then split it a technology fee and accidental damage loss policy.
Yeah, I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
So um, I show passing five zero. Um so I think, think about the the fee and accidental damage policy, some of it may be like an insurance type thing, another may be a fee, where you know, you know, it's gonna go towards, you know, new software, other things will be in there, as opposed to the insurance, which you, you know, breaking it doesn't.
And we can revisit as we move forward and talk about in spring, whether it's one-to-one or not, we can bring this piece forward and it can be, uh, you know, redo the policy with an agenda.
And we also could read the um faculty administrative use of laptop computers in other schools on technology first read. If I have any questions about that, that was a great.
We did discuss the fee in our meetings and it's not, it's not like an athletic fee. It's it's pretty minimal, it's quite modest. It is very modest, what we were thinking, so we just have to give it a little bit more thought.
Where where do you discuss it and what?
In our, in our policy meeting, when we were, were working on the policies.
Oh, cool.
So we're sort of a ballpark figure on that?
Um I- I mean, we were talking around or under fifty dollars. Right. So, I mean, yeah.
A year?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Oh, cool.
So it was a-
Is that what other schools do?
Mm-hmm. Um so it was very modest, but it does protect you and and we talked a lot, just the information that Super Tenda Cataldo got from Mr. Benel was that the insurance fees don't, it's an awful lot of money to put out and you don't, you you don't need to put out all that money. Right, I mean, when you think about Apple Care, it's a hundred dollars per device.
Oh, yeah.
So this would, this would offset that because not, knock on wood, not every child or teacher is going to drop their computer, you know. So a lot of that money is wasted.
And what I like is that parents have, uh what you talked about in the policy, they could opt out and have the kid, you know, have to leave the computer.
Right.
Because there's a lot of kids who have attention issues. One of my kids, you know, wasn't really good with this stuff, her whole wardrobe was in every school that she left in the lost and found. And so, you know, I would opt out for a year or so until she kinda got her act together. And she still would have the ability to use it in school, she just wouldn't take it home. So it wouldn't end up in some friend's house or on um a basketball court or god knows where.
Uh that, it's a very valid point, yes, and that's why we have it there. We also, I've found, just traditionally from speaking to other districts, that even those students who leave a trail behind of items, that they tend to hold on to the technology the most for some reason.
Most students.
Yeah, majority.
So the the-
We had, we had the insurance plan on every phone that she's ever had and used it quite often, so um-
So that the, so that the fee would be like a self-insurance policy, so it would not be necessarily an insurance um setup independently?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Correct, right. We would be covering everything and it would be the revolving counter replacement and so on.
Cool, so the next thing is Alice training.
Oh, are we done with this?
Right.
Sorry, I think it's the last one.
Yeah, it is.
So all the, all the paths, right?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll um, I'll separate out that other policy and then bring four policies back next week. All right, um so the last thing under my report is the Alice training. I just wanted to do an update because last week the folks came in, excuse me, the folks came in uh from the west coast to do a training and they spent the afternoon with our teachers and staff. We had as many people come as possible, we had uh the custodians come and we had secretaries come and ADSPs come, everybody was invited to come. And it appears that just about everybody was there because the room was filled. And so what the individual did, he didn't do the full training that we participated in for the two days because he only had a number of hours to do it, but he did present the beginning of what we see as the training of things uh to do in the classroom, to do in the school, talked about statistics and why it's important that we change, not do what we've been doing and stay with that, but we need to really change our techniques. And uh I know that we did the afternoon and then we did send emails out to sixteen hundred families for the evening. We had approximately nine parents come to the evening portion. But uh one of our parents was from the Board of Selectmen and right after that, we unfortunately had that incident in Colorado last week that lasted exactly eighty seconds, of which she recognized everything this man who had talked about in the training. It was obvious in this particular incident in Colorado that these folks have been trained and that how much less the damage was because it was taken care of in eight seconds. And so it's gone from being an eight, ten, fifteen minute item now to such a small window when something does happen. But it was very helpful, I received comments from the teachers stating that they were very pleased to hear that we're paying attention to it and that we gave them some information they could use. We had other teachers that had questions, I'll be visiting faculty meetings to answer those questions. And then I'm meeting with Deputy Chief William Quigley and we'll be moving further what we need to be doing and working with the principals again. They've already, the chief has already worked with the principals once, but he'll be coming back again to work further and talk about what we need to do, if students need to exit the buildings, where would they go, what, depending on the season. If it's winter, you can't trek across the field, you have to go somewhere else, and we'll be looking at all of the schools. So I just wanted to let the committee know what happened in the afternoon and then obviously what we had in the evening. In a way, it was very intimate, I thought, Mrs. Estino came and it was very intimate. We all sat up front and had the opportunity to throw some tennis balls and other items, uh but I felt it was a really good experience and it's definitely, we'll continue and move forward with it in the spring and then in the fall, we'll do some more planning.
Can I, I I have a question. Um are those, I wasn't able to make it that evening and and um are those training sessions for parents, could they ever be videotaped so that that's something that could be run on cable, so that other people might have an opportunity to see it?
The Alice folks don't allow the taping.
Okay.
That's why it's not taped.
That's how they make them.
Probably.
And I have a question. Um I've spoken with several teachers in the district about the Alice training that was conducted during the day. And I understand that what was presented to the parents, small of a number as it was, um was quite different than the training that was during the day. And I'm just curious if you were aware of some of the content that was gonna be trained during the day?
I was at both trainings.
I'm sorry?
I attended both trainings.
No, but did you know ahead of time what the training was gonna be like for the teachers?
Yes.
You did?
Yes, well, Bill Quigley and I worked with the Alice people and set up, yes, we did.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do you have another question?
More?
Next up is the warrant. Uh I think there is one more to read, is it the unemployment?
So the warrant fourteen ten S, we had um added the unemployment bill that came in after you signed the warrant, warrant, but we needed to get paid, so we're asking you to re-sign that warrant again, that was from the last one. And then warrant fourteen eleven S is the is the new warrant, but um-
I just gotta ask for um motion to approve warrant fourteen dash ten Sierra.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye, Mary McGolter.
Aye, Paul in your favor?
Aye, Paul Sweeney.
Aye, Gina Estino.
Aye, Holly Lee.
So we all have to re-sign that.
Yeah, I'll make a, ask for a motion for warrant fourteen dash eleven Sierra.
I'll make a motion to approve um warrant fourteen dash eleven S.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, Holly Lee.
Aye, Gina Estino.
Aye, Paul Sweeney.
Aye, Paul in your favor?
Aye, Mary McGolter.
Did we discuss the line item for um unemployment? Because I don't know where, because we don't have the benefit of um financials right now. I'm just curious where we are because of the cuts at the beginning of the year, I'm a little bit concerned.
Well, um as you may recall, we cut the unemployment line down to fifty thousand. And I, you know, I've I've been saying the last couple of months that we probably are gonna go over that and I think we will reach the limit pretty soon, actually.
I just think it's important for the rest of the committee to understand that that may be a problem.
How much you think it'll go over?
Um well, I'm not sure yet, it's it's just hard to judge because you don't know when somebody's gonna come off unemployment once they, you know, get a job, they're gonna come off it.
They get jobs.
Um if they all are, if the people that are on and stay on, we we may be over, you know, by fifteen, twenty thousand by the end of the year.
Like, oh yeah, I mean, this is something that most districts don't have on that line item.
Right, usually it's on the top side.
We're probably one of, one of two in eight in the Commonwealth that have that, aside from the um regional school district which run already independently.
Yeah.
This is something that the Board of Selectmen transferred over to schools without our approval about five years ago and I strongly think that this should be um sent back to the town side because all the other benefits are from the town side.
I suggested that to Mr. DeGenaro that if we ran out of money in that line item, because of the steep cut, that we should go back to the town.
I mean, we said we could run it in the red and then at the end of the year decide whether we need to go back to the town for the funding or use other, you know, use other accounts if the the funding is still available.
Probably the mechanism for doing that, you'd have to go to town meeting to do it?
Uh the Board of Selectmen have the town meeting, you have to, yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to.
On the stabilization, on the sample fund, or if something's available.
Mrs. Estino has a comment.
And transfer line items within your budget.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
If we, if we have available-
I wouldn't do anything, right, I wouldn't do anything else.
The concern is that the original-
I did when I was in school.
Right, I thoroughly-
These all went to the end of the of the June.
Right.
Right.
If you ran out of money, then you-
Yeah.
I, I, I thoroughly understand.
This is a suggestion.
Usually that's what we do at the end of the year, we bring it to the committee saying these line items are in depth.
This is, this is a peculiarity of our district having the unemployment-
I know, I was on the board of this.
No, I understand, but I'm just voicing my concern is that this, from from our um district,
Yeah, we're not-
it's it's really unusual to have that as a line item on the district, which is not a regional district, which would have an entirely different system of financials.
Yeah, right, right.
We're, we're the only one in the area, and I know only one other in the state that has that as a line item on their, as a non-regional school district. So that was transferred about five years ago and I I strongly recommend that that be transferred back. That can only be done through the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, well, it must have been the Board of Selectmen that changed.
Yeah.
Wanted everything in each compartment, that's all I can say.
I, I can only assume that's the case, I know it happened um about five, six years ago, five years ago.
Well, you can, actually, uh the advisory board, they, they talked to them about it, just see what they can say.
I'll speak to them.
We've done a really good job controlling that cost.
When you, when you have, when you're two, right, something on that, if you're talking to them.
Okay. Did you, you, I'm sorry, you had something?
Yeah, uh I mean, I get to be on times every Sunday and I'm bringing this up, um they're running a series, this is from December eighth, that's what happened, about numbers crunch, it says, who says math has to be boring? They reflect the lead uh decline, not in this state of the mathematics and science. And since that's my field and I'm very interested, I thought I'd read that, the article. Uh I don't have any of the others because I'm a bit of a medical house, but I'm sure they're in, you can get it.
It's online.
And they're very, they're very good, it's the editorials, they're like four or five, so.
Yeah, it's definitely not.
And I think it's good to put up against what you're doing.
I'm sure.
The mathematics has always been good here. I'm concerned about the foreign languages because I had six years of school, I went to a Boston Public School, we started the seventh grade growing up and we also had ancient history in the seventh grade, which could be combined with worldwide because I I find that with the testing now, because some of my children, grandchildren have gone to other school systems that the uh testing for N S A cases and everything is much more comprehensive and they have been covered statewide in terms of education, systems, uh school boards, I'm having the background of these tests and testing lines and uh partly through different countries, so that's something to consider with you because you can do your social studies in a different way with ed, with, you can have everybody do it because you're more a lecturer and then you have to test it, so that's something to consider currently because I worked on this when I was on board.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very interesting, I enjoyed this discussion together.
That's good.
Okay, well, thank you.
I'll give it, oh, my word, I, I immediately got to him and I said, I thought we accomplished a lot. We have a new, we hired a new um time manager.
Did he accept?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
But then we have to negotiate everything.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Which we do here, which everyone does. No, and he was, he, because all of us either called or emailed him and I talked with him this morning and he wanted, he said he has a fine place to live and I suggest, I temporarily suggested Avalon because they have short-term management.
And so how's, right next to mine, that's available.
Because he's alive, sure, oh, yeah, but he's not gonna buy it, you know.
All right.
I, I really-
The longer he buys.
But it was a very interesting experience. It was tough because actually all five of them were very good, even if we didn't download any, any of them.
Oh, congratulations.
And Michael has offered up a job at the Carver.
Carver.
Last night too, everybody was getting jobs.
It's all good.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Um next up, communications?
Well, um I would just like to say thank you to Mrs. Estino and Mrs. Cataldo for all the support during the writing of the policy technology.
Mrs. McGolter for actually taking on the task and going through them.
Little did I know, that's all I can say, but thank you very much.
Oh, you should have been here two years ago. Yeah, this was a great thing, it was a great um process.
Well, I'll see you after that, that's a beautiful thing.
They will, you're right, so, anyway, thanks very much for that.
Uh was that the advisor, the um budget planning group, brother? Uh and Mike Melonowski went through the financials for the town, giving a, initially a uh five-year forecast and then went out to twenty years and discussing the capital investment from the town. What's available from new growth, what's available from state, um and it- um, what's available from new growth, what's available from state, um, and it looks like the monies that are available this year will be in a better situation than last year, um, as well as the state revenues have been remarkably higher this year. It's about ten point seven as of November, December is a huge month for sales, for bonuses, for, um, uh, new cars, so that should also help the, um, the investment in the state, local and.
About a billion dollars ahead of plan, right, over twelve months?
It, it looks like it's about a billion, yes, it's like eight hundred million, depends, yeah, seven hundred million right now, depending what, December will be, probably be close to that. The one caveat is that if the percentage of, as they track, there's going to be a decrease in the mass state income tax from five point two-five to five point two-zero, so there'll be a drop of point zero five percent as of January first. It looks like all the numbers are going to hit, so it, it will be an automatic reduction in the income tax, which, um, locally, it doesn't affect us, but statewide, that would be about a sixty million dollar cut in state revenues for next year, but they're ahead, you know, with the billion, so, um, so that, that came up. And then at capital budget, I went, and, um, they went through, Mike also went through the capital investments for the town, and what was available money-wise over twenty years, what are the major projects in the town that were there. Um, there's a, a fair piece in technology that if it gets through, um, there'll be a fair piece for monies for technology from the town and for the schools, and I'm hoping that will, um, get through the budget.
Was that meeting this week?
What's that?
The budget meeting this week.
Uh. It's supposed to be tomorrow, but it's kind of canceled.
Uh, that one's canceled, but that was the one, I guess you guys were in the audience on that one, but the.
No, the capital.
Oh, capital, that was, uh, last Thursday.
Thursday.
Was it Thursday?
It was Thursday.
Thursday. Sparingly intended, it was just, it was just.
Oh, this is, we're not talking about the same meeting, sorry, we're not talking about the one where we kept the.
No, it was, yeah, no, it was, um.
Want to talk about other news?
I think that, that's all I have.
Um, I did go to the, um, school council meeting yesterday, but I think I shared a lot of it when we were talking with other school, um, so, pay more attention to what I was talking about, and then the other one was the Board of Elder Affairs, and not too much is going on, and they're working on things, with the senior center and everything. Um, if you want to donate, um, five thousand dollars, you can have a, or get a boat, you know, founder's boat, or ten thousand, you get a bigger boat, fifteen thousand, or even bigger boats. So they're trying to get people, but it's a good way to honor relatives and things like that, and it's, uh, there is definitely interest in, in the contributions are, uh, to the capital campaign for it, and it's beginning to, um, light up a little bit, so it's a good thing. And, you know, the school council, they just, they just want more input from us.
Right, right, and Mrs. Conley wrote, and in fact, I know Mr. Bonnell already has responded to her.
Right, that's cool.
And the, uh, CF has their annual appeal, so, could you feel so, fine?
I have a trivia question for the group, what does Alice stand for?
I always have to look, so maybe do that.
Mary knows the answer.
Yeah.
Alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate.
Yes.
Interesting.
Yeah, they try to have an acronym, so that you respond according to the acronym. If you forget the acronym, you're frozen.
Right, that's it.
Accronyms are the, 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 the.
They are.
Right, I need a song.
Mary's violet eyes make the john sit up next to me.
That's the right, that's the right. Yeah, and no, uh, no one wants to speak, so, um, is there a reason to go to a session?
No, there is not.
There's a reason to go to a band.
Well, thank you all for the support, and have a great holiday, and, uh, believe it.
Yes, happy holiday, happy new year.
I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-eight, since.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hold on, fair?
Aye.
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 On Friday's the last day of school, what time do we need to get out?
Yes, yes.
No, older.
Full day. Goodness, if we were to be, we're going to be ten days off, they just say it's.
Can they come back on January second?
Yes.
Yes.